Good morning and welcome to the January 11th, 2023 City Council Meeting. I hope everybody had a great holiday and Happy New Year. We're going to begin with Councilmember McKeller giving the invocation, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Would you pray with me, please? Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we just stopped by this morning to say thank you. I want to say thank you for the mayor, thank you for council, thank you for our city manager, our city attorney, and thank you for all the city staff. But in particular, Father, I say thank you for the opportunity to serve the great city of Tyler, Texas. And Father, I'm reminded this morning of a scripture in Matthew's 18th chapter in the 15th verse, and it says, "If you have aught against your brother," that includes your sister, "take it to them and them alone," not your family members, not your friends, but to that person, and that would be enough. Father, we ask that you help us to legislate laws and rules that will affect the city of Tyler, not in a negative way, but in a positive way. And Father, bless each and every one of those that we serve, because it is a privilege to be able to serve. And Father, I'm so reminded of a message from my minister, Dr. Edward Robinson, and he said, and I quote, "Every person needs a little bit of KFC." And I know you're thinking about the chicken, but not this morning, Father. We're thinking about K meaning kindness. We're thinking about F meaning forgiveness, and we're thinking about C meaning compassion. And Father, if we have that for each and every one of us, if we give more best to this community, then that would be enough. Father, I say thank you once again for this great opportunity. And now, as we get into this meeting, pray that everything that we do will be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. And Father, one more thing, bless those nurses that are in New York, because I understand the struggles. Send them help, what they need, in order to take care of the patients that are needed. In Jesus' name we pray, and let my Father's children say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minute November the 9th, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Westbrook. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z1, Kyle.
Good morning, Mayor Council.
Good morning.
First item is a zone change request, 2311 East Southeast Loop 323. This has changed the zoning from C1 light commercial to C2 general commercial district. This property is at the, near the southeast intersection of Troup Highway and Loop 323. The adjacent properties are generally developed with commercial uses, C2 zoning, C1. Also, to the south of the property is zoned for residential use, and it's developed as such. This request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide, identifying the property as mixed-use centered. The applicant plans to, their request is to rezone from C1 to C2 to allow for additional commercial uses on the property. The applicant is here if there's any questions in that regard. Of the notices that were sent out, none were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan to commission by a 7-0 vote recommended approval.
So has the applicant made any kind of a comment on what he wants to do with that property? Just curious.
No, it's pretty, I mean, they're here to answer that, but no, it's just to make sure that there's the ability to use the property if there is a change or like a proposed tenant at that time.
Okay. He's shaking his head no. Any questions for Kyle on this item?
Move to approve, Z1.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
Next request is a zone change from R1A, single-family district, to R1D, single-family and single-family attached residential district. This is on Old Noonday Road. The applicant's requesting the change to develop the property with single-family homes. The adjacent properties are all zoned for residential use and are generally developed with single-family homes. There is property to the northwest, which is currently zoned C1, but is a single-family home. This request would amend the Future Land Use Guide from single-family medium-low density to single-family and single-family attached. This property is located within the north end or the northwest end of Tyler, and this request would promote the development of new rooftops in the north end. As you can see here, it is along Old Noonday Road, currently undeveloped. Of the notices we received, none were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan to commission by a 7-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z2.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z3.
This is a zone change request from multifamily to AR adaptive reuse district. This is on South Chilton. The request is to allow the applicant to use the property as an office. The surrounding properties are generally developed or zoned for multifamily, but are developed with single-family homes. And then there are AR properties to the west and south, which are developed with single-family homes and bed and breakfast. This request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide, identifying as single-family medium-in-the-low-density. AR zoning would allow the property to be reused for either a single-family home or an office, allow that option to keep the property in use. It is a local historic district or landmark. It is the Isabel and Lester Smith House, and this zone change is appropriate for properties that are looking to retain their historic character, as well as to be kept in continuous use. Of the notices we sent out, none were returned in favor or in opposition, and the plan to commission by a 7-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z2.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z4.
Next request is a zone change from planned industrial, or M1 light industrial, to R1D, single-family and single-family attached residential district. This is on North Beverly Avenue. The applicant's requesting the change to develop a single-family home on this property. The surrounding properties to the north, south, and east are zoned M1, are generally undeveloped at this time. To the west is R1B, and are developed with single-family homes. This is similar to a request that we received previously just to the north, where you can see it's currently zoned R1D for the same purpose. This request would amend the Future Land Use Guide to single-family and single-family attached. But again, being in the north end, this will help promote additional rooftops in that area. Of the notices that were sent out, none were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan to commission by a 7-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z4.
Second.
Motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z5.
Next request is a zone change from agricultural district to P&amp;F planned multifamily district. This is to allow for the development of a multifamily development on this property. The actual units will be single-family detached units plus some duplexes on a single lot, so that's why it's been developed as a multifamily project, but it's not an apartment complex. The surrounding properties are zoned for agricultural use and are currently undeveloped. To the north is currently located outside the city limits. This is at the intersection of Crow Road and Oak Hill Boulevard. The Future Land Use Guide identifies as a single-family medium-low-density. This request would amend it to reflect single-family and single-family attached. The proposed density is, again, is, I'll go to the site plan real quick here. So these are single-family detached units plus some duplexes on this property. Overall, 310 units on the property, density of 10.57 units per acre. The development will be gated and will have access to Crow Road and Oak Hill Boulevard. Of the notices that were sent out, none were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan to commission by a 7-0 vote recommended approval.
Thanks, Kyle. We do have a card here from Reagan Headens, if you wish to speak or just to hear for questions.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Kyle? It's a big project.
Move to approve, Z5.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project. Z6.
Next request is a zone change and a site plan amendment. This is a zone change from agricultural district, C1 light commercial, and PCD planned commercial district to planned multifamily, and also a site plan amendment for the existing multifamily zoning. The applicant's requesting the change to, again, develop multifamily housing at this property. This is along West Cumberland Road, near Cherry Hill and Blue Mountain Boulevard. This, or the adjacent properties to the north are zoned for commercial use, primarily undeveloped at this point, but there are, there's the corner at Blue Mountain and West Cumberland Road, which is being developed. The adjacent properties to the south and east are generally zoned and developed with single-family homes. To the east is the fire station for the city. This request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide, which identifies as a mixed-use center. The applicant is proposing the development of 274 single-story attached units on the property with a density of just over 14 units per acre. We'll go with that here. The, it'll be a mixture of 167 one-bed, 92-bed, and 17 three-bedroom units. The main access will be off of West Cumberland Road, as well as Cherry Hill. The existing site plan for the multifamily property there has only access to the internal streets and the North Cherry Hill, and that was for single-story townhome units as well, or condominiums. The site plan does show a buffer yard to the south on the property adjacent to the single-family homes that will have to be maintained, and then there is a green belt on the west side adjacent to Blue Mountain Boulevard. The, like I mentioned, in 2008, the site plan that was approved had most of the access internally through the other neighborhoods. This one has access through, two points of access, one off of Cumberland Road and then also Cherry Hill. The, of the notices we sent out, we did receive five in favor and five in opposition, with a total protest of 1.45%. Generally, the opposition was concerned about additional traffic in the area, drainage issues, and then also some privacy concerns. The applicant, they are here to discuss their project, but they have shown on the site plan those elements for privacy with the buffer yards, and then also try, they tried to address the traffic concerns by keeping everything off of those interior streets. And so, the plan to commission by a 7-0 vote recommended approval of the request.
We've got a couple of cards. Before we move to those, anybody have any questions for Kyle?
I'll make one comment. Kyle, I want to applaud you and the developers, Paul and David, on taking the time to actually go back and look at what took place at P&amp;Z when this was a different project several months ago, and really listen to those concerns of the residents around there about the buffer areas, about the height of the previously proposed project, the entrance and exit access points, and really listen to those concerns and take that to heart and make those necessary changes. Because as this is presented, that entrance and exit that was originally proposed by the schools only going to be a fire emergency exit, so all that traffic will not be diverted towards the school, but towards Cumberland instead. So I appreciate y'all taking the time to actually meet with the neighbors around there and hear those concerns, and then go back and do the homework of listening to the previous P&amp;Z meetings. I appreciate that.
Any other comments for Kyle? All right, we got two cards here, one from Mark Kreisner here for questions, and then we also have Paul Stell. Do you wish to speak or are you here for questions?
I'll leave you questions.
Okay. Do y'all have questions for either of them?
I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project. Z7.
All right, this last item is a request for a special use permit at this property, at 3251 South Broadway Avenue. The applicant is requesting the special use permit to allow for a food truck park on this property. This is the old Shogun's site, and they are seeking to utilize the property to have a food truck park, limited to eight mobile food vendors at one time. The adjacent properties in that area are zoned and used for commercial uses. To the west is a single-family residential district with a single-family home. There is flood plain on part of that property to the west. This request is consistent, it's not a zone change, but it's consistent with that general commercial, that outdoor activity in that area for general commercial. This is the property here. The applicant, they plan to utilize all the existing parking spaces that the restaurant previously had. They plan to utilize the kitchen as a commissary for the food trucks, so they can utilize that space for their prep area. But the recommendation, when it went through the, went through the plan to commission, there was a discussion about limiting the food trucks to the northwest part of that property there, that little, that part that comes up to the north, have that area as where all the trucks and trucks would be located, just try to maximize the parking availability and maneuvering on the property. That's why they, they thought that was a better layout for the property. Actually, I have, yeah, there we go. So, and so the applicant initially requested for up to nine units for mobile food vendors. The plan to commission held that eight was a little bit better, so they recommended that, limited to this area, limited to one year, and then they could be renewed thereafter. There's also some concern about parking in that area if it did get to be quite popular. So the, the plan to commission did recommend that the, the applicant work with the adjacent neighbors to the north or neighbor to the north to try to get a shared parking agreement with them to have parking availability when the, when the food truck park is open. There may be some off-peak hours that they, that there wouldn't be a conflict that they could arrange. The notices we sent out, we didn't receive any in favor or in opposition to the request, but like I mentioned, the plan to commission did recommend approval for a one-year period of time, limiting the food trucks to that northwest area on the property, also requiring then, requiring the owner to obtain a shared parking agreement for additional parking spaces, and then also limiting it to eight units instead of nine.
Can you go back to that area? It seemed like if your food trucks are up in that corner, that they're hidden. And I know that we're not here to plan the layout of a food truck park, but if you're driving down Broadway, when you go to a food truck park, it seemed like you'd want to be able to see the food trucks. But that's just, I guess I'm surprised that this is, one of the conditions of the approval previously was that they're parked kind of outside out of mind.
Is that part of the agreement, that they have to be up in that north, northern?
That's what the plan to commission recommended approval. That's the, one of the conditions of their recommendation.
Oh, do you know if that building has already been approved for a commissary?
I don't believe it has.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, what was the question?
If the building has been approved for a commissary.
The kitchen. Yeah, it would just be a kitchen. They may, I think they need-
It's been closed a long time.
They needed to work with Net Health on making sure there's enough capacity in the, you know, the grease trap and things like that.
Kyle, well, it's one of the things that the P&amp;Z, to kind of answer, go back to the mayor's question, I know there's a lot of discussion about parking and making sure there was adequate parking for the food truck park.
Right.
Was that part of the reasons that they asked for the, for the food trucks to be kind of located in that spot?
Yeah, yeah, it was. Yes, sir.
So you didn't have to drive through customers in order to get to the parking.
Well, I guess one advantage of the two is for a year.
That's true.
If you find out we have a problem.
Bob, you're a restaurant guy.
Well, you know, I echo your sentiment. I would want to be in view of the public, of the traffic that's going past that facility, so.
But apparently the applicant is willing to accept their condition, so I mean-
They can come back and ask for that change later, too.
No, I mean, they said okay.
But if somebody wants to make a motion to approve this and take that off the table, you can. I'm just, just throwing it out. Pardon me?
Yes, there's a caveat, you're good.
I move to approve then, and take that caveat off the table and have them work that out amongst themselves. I'll second that.
Okay. Got a motion by Haney and a second by Westbrook to approve the item and with a caveat of the food trucks not having to be up in the circle. Any further discussion?
The red circle indicated on the map.
It's indicated on the map. Excuse me, Mr. Attorney. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
P1. Okay.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Well, I'm, I'm here today to request that you receive a presentation on an update on our consent decree program. And here to give that presentation is Jim Forbes with Pipeline Analysis. He's been here since the very beginning of the consent decree program, so I'm pleased to introduce him and have him give the presentation.
So I assume you want the presentation.
Sure.
Okay, I'm Jim Forbes with Pipeline Analysis, here to give you an update on where we're at on the, on the collection system consent decree. As you'll aware, the consent decree went into effect April 10th of 2017, and we're at the 60% mark come April of this year. So we're over halfway. We're going downhill on this now. Just keep in mind, all work has to be completed, and you have to be under all the requirements of the consent decree come April of 2027. This next slide is the takeaway from this entire presentation. The most important metric and reason for the consent decree are sanitary sewer overflows, known as SSOs. The downward trend is extremely important. EPA looks at this in the annual report that goes in every year, and you can see that trend is downward. I'd have a whole different discussion if that trend was moving back upward. It demonstrates Environmental Protection Agency and the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality that you're meeting the requirements of the consent decree, that you're making progress in the consent decree, and the efforts to date regarding design, construction, staff procedures that are in place are working. So this is the gold star. This is what we want to see. We're not at our goal yet, but if you project that out, we're definitely, could meet that goal this time next year. That's where we're headed. To give you an idea, five SSOs per 100 miles is kind of the place where EPA would decide, maybe this city doesn't need to have a consent decree. I can tell you that there are cities in North Texas that are in the one and two SSOs per 100 miles, and those cities have all plastic pipe. They're fairly new systems. So your system is 700 miles of clay pipe, in essence, which is going to be problematic until it's all replaced 100 years from now. So what is the, you know, what's causing the current SSOs? In 2022, the SSOs were associated with fats, oils, and grease, and debris. 29% of the SSOs last year were due to debris that collects in the lines. A lot of your lines are on real flat slopes, so the debris tends to settle out. Staff has standard operating procedures in place now, that if there's an SSO and they TV that line and realize that it's, because it's a flat slope, they'll put that on a high-frequency cleaning program. So they'll go in there and clean it every three months or six months, just to make sure that this SSO doesn't happen again. And those are the type of results we see from that. Root intrusion is a, more of a minor problem, but with clay pipe, it's a big problem throughout the city. In the past, the staff has outsourced the root removal process. Now, Tim Moore and his group has purchased the equipment and performing this root removal in-house, and that's going to have tremendous savings also over the long term. Fat oil and grease are related to food establishments, food service establishments. The grease interceptors are being inspected by Mike Norris and his group on the industrial side. So they're doing inspections, they're looking for, make sure those grease traps are pumped out like they should be, and the grease interceptors are, are performing like they're designed. Grease-related SSOs are down 45% over last year. So what he's doing on that end is also working very well. As you can see, that's the grease inspection performance. There's 443 grease interceptors, food service establishments, cafeterias, restaurants within the city. There's been 475 grease inspections, and that number is greater than the number of food service establishments, which means some of them they're going back to for compliance issues or to make sure that they get pumped out regularly.
So there's one of those at every restaurant?
There's, there's generally one of those at every restaurant.
That's correct.
And the purpose of that is to collect the grease into a vault, and then that is pumped out regularly, 90 days, 180 days, and that keeps that grease from getting back into the system. And if there's anything in the system that grease is going to adhere to, and it can cause a plug and cause an overflow. Cleaning, Environmental Protection Agency feels cleaning is one of the most important things a city can do to reduce SSOs. They require that all your 692 miles of sewer be cleaned in seven years, and you're on schedule to, to complete that. We have this next year to get that done, and you can see that you're way over on, on the cleaning goal, and that's because so many of these lines are on a higher frequency of cleaning. Because of the blockages that are occurring, they're on a high-frequency cleaning, so the city crews are going out there and they're jetting these at a, say, on a 90-day schedule, just to make sure that they don't accumulate debris and cause an overflow. So there's a lot of preventive maintenance going on within the city to address these SSOs. Manhole inspections, you have 11,800 manholes in the system. All those have been inspected, and they've all been recorded, and they're all in various stages of repair and construction. The condition of manholes and recommended repairs have been addressed, and final construction is, has either been completed or the final ones are now ongoing. Smoke testing is ongoing, and it's very visible. This test involves forcing smoke into the sanitary sewer, and it's going to come up out of the ground wherever rainwater can get in. So if we see smoke coming out, rainwater finds its way in, and that's, that's been a real problem. And that's, that's been a real problem in the past, and it's been a cause of some very large sanitary sewer overflows historically here in the city. So the smoke testing tests both the city mains and the private laterals. And to date, we've tested 1.7 million feet of sanitary sewer. And in that footage, we've replaced 2,439 cleanout caps. These are cleanout caps on private property that either have been left off, the mowers come by and broke them off. Those have been replaced to prevent that rainwater from getting into the sanitary sewer. In addition, there's mainline defects that we find during smoke testing. All those have been packaged, and the first phase of that work is, has been completed. And the second phase, I believe, is on the council agenda for Langdon to continue with that next phase of repairs. TV inspection, all 692 miles of sewer has to be internally inspected according to the consent decree, and you have eight years to complete that work. Here, a couple of years ago, we want to get this work done in seven years. We're moving up that work, we want to get it done in seven years for the mere fact that on the previous slides, you saw that we had to clean all these lines in seven years. Well, unfortunately, TV, you have to clean the line before you TV it. So if we wait and do it that eighth year, we're having to re-clean lines. So there's a considerable amount of savings if we can get this done by December of this year. And there's monthly meetings with the cleaning and TV contractor to try, make sure we try to stay on schedule to complete this by December of this year. Group one remedial measures and construction is performed by LAN consultant engineers, that work is complete. Group two, KSA, perform the design and construction, and all that work has been completed. Group three remedial measures by KSA, and the photographs there show a very special project that was involved in that was the cured-in-place lining of the 48-inch line to the West Treatment Plant. That's a 48-inch diameter concrete pipe, highly deteriorated. So the option is replace it, open cut it, replace it, or we could use cured-in-place lining, which basically you create a fiberglass pipe within the pipe. And that will extend the life of this pipe another 75 to 100 years. And so it was a unique project. So all the work in, in this group three is, is now complete. Group four remedial measures, that's kind of where we're at right now. Langdon is doing the group four work, it's currently under construction. The design is complete and construction has started on that work. Group five is being designed by KSA, construction is ongoing, and completion is end of this year. Also, the Langdon, the group five is, yeah, the group four work is, is going to be completed by the end of this year. We have two major construction projects, remedial measures will be done by the end of this year also. Another major project is the capacity-related projects. These are lines that are just too small. Hydraulic model looked at some of these sanitary sewer overflows, and some of these pipes are just undersized. There's no way to make them bigger to get the flow that's there today and in the future for the next 20 years through that pipe. So these are major capacity improvements that are being made. KSA is performing, four projects right now are under construction, and remaining projects are yet to be designed, and construction has to be completed by the end of the consent decree in 2027. So this is going to be a fairly large ticket item because it involves some large, you know, increase in pipe sizes in some difficult locations within the city. Upcoming deliverables, capacity management operations maintenance plan, that has to be updated annually, so that's in the process of being updated. That will be due to EPA come March 1st. The annual report is what EPA and TCEQ will review, and that's coming up for, that will be due also at the same time. Then the group six assessment remedial measures plan will be due to EPA July 6th, and this will get toward the end of some of the normal construction associated with the condition of the system. To date, all report deliverables to TCEQ and EPA have been delivered on time. Groups one through three are complete, groups four and five are under construction. Group six will be submitted July 1st to EPA for review and approvals, and the capacity improvements are now ongoing. I will mention, we submit all these reports to EPA on time. I believe we've only gotten, I'm not even sure we've gotten any response from EPA or review of any of those documents to date. Which is good. We'll let them sit there on their desk. I, I do want to mention one non-consent decree related project that has a major impact on the consent decree, and that's the wastewater treatment plant master plan. Garber engineers are doing that master plan on the treatment plant. We're building all these bigger pipes, we're improving the system, we're getting the water out of the system, we're designing it to handle flows for the next 20 years. All that flow is going to get to the treatment plants. We got to make sure the treatment plants can handle it when it gets there. So that's what the master plan on the treatment plant side is doing. So I think Mike Norris would be real interested in what the results of that master plan are going to show, but those two, both consent decree and that master plan really link together. So it's really important to keep focused on that master plan and the impact it will have on, on this consent decree. Finally, just an interesting fact in closing, if you take the municipal mainline sewer, add all the private laterals in the system, and put it end to end, it'll reach from Tyler, Texas to the Canadian border. And if you're under a consent decree, the first group that goes out there will be the city staff and inspectors, and you start walking to the Canadian border. And you know, on your way, you're going to inspect every manhole, you inspect every pipe, you're going to inspect every lift station, and then the second group follow-up will be to the design consultants. They're going to follow up, they're going to look at all this information that you've gathered, they're going to put together the plans and specs for construction. Then the third group follows them, and that's the contractors. They're going to go in there and start fixing everything as you go. And then, when you get to the Canadian border, EPA will follow up at the very end and review everything. And at that point, you've finished this consent decree. So we're about 60, 60% of the way there. There's still some hills and obstacles in the way that, before we get to the finish, but to date, I can say that everything's on time, we're where we need to be, and the trends are all positive. We're all where we would expect to be at this point. And I must say, Tim Moore and his group, Mike Norris and treatment plant group, they're doing a fantastic job. They've got standard operating procedures in place now that have made a big difference and has really improved how the system is operating during this interim period during construction. Questions?
So 60% done, and we had a dollar figure that was plugged in several years ago, and because of inflation and all that, has that dollar figure to do the 10-year consent decree gone up significantly, or are we shooting about the same?
I think it's gone up, and significantly, I would say, you could safely say probably significantly, for the mere fact that when the consent decree was negotiated, the hydraulic model wasn't there. We didn't know what kind of capacity improvements needed to be made. We really hadn't investigated any of the clay pipes to see what the condition is and what's going to cost to do those repairs. Right now, and I think that number was like 200 million, if I recall, at the beginning of the consent decree. I think we'll be bumping up against that, and depending on these, how the bids come in for these capacity improvements, I think there's a potential we could exceed that.
Well, this is a huge project.
Yes.
And, and I was on council when this was initiated, and between you and Kate and the entire staff, I mean, it's just, it's just huge. And y'all are handling it well, and, and appreciate your efforts. So anybody want to make any comments?
It's a good report. Just curiosity, reports sent to EPA is pretty standard for them not to reply, or maybe a year or two from now, you hear something back on the first report?
We, we make reports to EPA for a lot of clients, and we rarely, it's very common not to, not to get responses back. A response will come if you have a major spill or major overflow that may have killed some fish, then they'll start looking real close at what the reports had in them, and then you'll probably, we probably hear from them. But to date, it's not uncommon for EPA to kind of sit on these reports. They can always come back and say, you know what, we didn't like the way you did that, we want you to change it. And that may be from work that was done two years ago. But we haven't seen anything like that. EPA, I think, you know, they, they get the reports on time, and if there was something major with them, I think we'd hear from them.
Either questions or comments?
Thank you for being there.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to M1, Chief Cubble.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Attorney.
We have M1 this morning, we're requesting that the city council consider ratifying all city staff actions related to and authorizing the city managers take action necessary to accept and expend the 2022 assistance to firefighters grant fund in the amount of $91,150 for the purchase and installation of washer extractor units for the title fire department. This is a 90-10 matching grant from the federal government. They'll be contributing $82,863.63, leaving the city of Tyler responsible for $8,286.37. This is the next step in our ongoing efforts to reduce occupational risk of being a firefighter, and more specifically, the risk of cancer. This is, January is firefighter cancer awareness month, and so this just follows suit that it falls in here that we're asking for approval a little bit. Both this city council and the previous city council have been very supportive in our initiatives to try to reduce the risk of cancer in the fire department. Some of the other initiatives that we've done previously was particulate hoods, so those are the hoods that the firefighters wear. We've gotten firefighters two sets of gear so that they don't have to wear contaminated set, they have a second fire within a certain time period. When we built the two new fire stations, they all had cancer reduction pieces to them as well, the separation of where the gear is and where exhaust and other things coming to the station. And all the trucks that we've ordered since 2019 have had a cancer reduction package as part of them. So this is just the next step. Of course, cancer is a leading cause of death among firefighters, and dirty gear is known, is a known contributor, exposing wares to carcinogenic chemicals, particulates, toxins, and biohazard. As more and more particulates and chemicals attach to a protective gear, it puts firefighters and those who come in contact with them at risk. Without proper cleaning, protective gear becomes hazardous. Last year, we applied for and received notification that we were awarded the assistance to firefighters grant to purchase and install commercial washer extractors for five additional title fire stations. With these installations, we'll have extractors at nine of the 10 fire stations that we have. And just as we've done our analysis, we found out that one of those extractors at one of our stations is grossly undersized, so we'll be able to replace that one outside of this grant and then put that last one at the 10th station. So all of our stations at the end of this project and the supplemental that we do just within our budget afterwards, we'll be able to have extractors at every station, so they'll be able to wash them as soon as possible when they get back from, from being at a five. We are requesting that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to accept the 2022 assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $82,863.63 for the purchase and installation of commercial washer extractor unit for the title fire. Any questions?
Move to approve M1.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I do want to say one thing. I can honestly say on behalf of everybody up here, you know, safety for, for the fire department is, is number one. And to have something like this come before us where we can do what we can to improve safety, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Need to vote?
Do we already have a motion and a second?
Yeah, Haney, win.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Sorry to sidetrack.
Very passionate.
Okay.
Good morning, again.
Good morning.
You got me now. So this is agenda item M2. It's an engineering services contract for the Shackleford Lift Station, Shackleford Creek Lift Station improvements. So some history on the Shackleford Creek Lift Station. It was constructed in 2000, and it provides service to a very large portion of South Tyler, about 3,500 acres of our surface area. This, this lift station pumps between 600 and 650,000 gallons per day of sewer over to the south side wastewater treatment plant to be treated. The existing location is prone to flooding because it's right next to Shackleford Creek, and that's problematic for the electrical equipment that's located within the lift station. So because of the function of lift stations, they're located in low-lying areas typically because you're lifting the sewer from a lower area up to gravity where gravity can take over and take it to the plant. So, you know, unfortunately, where the electrical was installed in the Shackleford Creek Lift Station, it gets underwater when it's, when it's flooded, and that's not good, obviously. Exposure to the elements, electrical equipment, and safety for the operators that are going in. So this project is going to include several site improvements to help mitigate that flooding. So there's going to be an earthen berm, reinforced concrete retaining wall, stormwater pump station, but the electrical improvements are going to include replacing some outdated equipment as well as locating those electrical, that electrical equipment up in the office as opposed down to the bottom floor of the lift station. So I'm here to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with KSA engineers for the Shackleford Creek Lift Station Improvements Project in the amount of $327,350.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, M3.
All right, M3, as, excuse me, as Jim Forbes had brought up, this is an engineering services contract with Langdon Engineering for our group two private lateral repair program. So as a review of what a private lateral is, a private lateral is the pipe that connects a citizen's home sewer service to the city of Tyler system, and that includes all the way from the sewer main to the house connection. And that is the private property owner's responsibility for the maintenance of that entire, entire private lateral. However, private laterals, as we found from smoke testing, well, and actually generally statistically, private laterals are responsible for about 33% of the infiltration and inflow in an entire gravity sewer, or an entire system. And so that infiltration and inflow, that's stormwater flow that comes in, that's groundwater intrusion, that's any, any surface flow that can get into the, the private lateral itself, private lateral or sewer system as far as INI goes. So what it does is that ends up reducing our capacity in our sewer system, which results in us having sanitary sewer overflows. So this private lateral repair program includes us getting rid of that wet weather INI in these private laterals as a part of our remedial measures portion of the consent decree. So, and we have piloted this with us making these repairs to the private laterals for Basins 8 and 15. That smoke testing was done in 2019, and that project just recently wrapped up with Langdon. This is going to be on Basins 13 and 17. That smoke testing was just completed in 2022, and so now we'll be making improvements to those private laterals. The engineering portion of this project, they're going to pretty much be doing the program management for this part of it. So they'll be doing some design as well, they'll do programming, project communication with the homeowners, data review, design plans, and construction admin. And this project amount is $263,000. So we're requesting that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute contract with Langdon Engineering in the amount of $263,000 for the private lateral repair program group two, and to adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve.
I do, I do. I have one question.
I have one question. So like the smoke test, like Jim had in his presentation where he saw the smoke come up out of the yard, the, there's a leak in a, in a side lateral. What are we, what are we doing on that? I mean...
Well, the smoke testing is so that we can identify where those leaks are. And so those have all been a part of these different basins we've just recently done. So if we smoke tested it up to this point, the city has decided to move forward with paying to take care of those, like cleanout caps and other, and other issues.
To fix it.
Yes. One, this once.
Yes, right.
Yes.
Most of what you found were caps missing.
Mostly, yeah. And I have the statistics if you want me to know. But that, that's a very common, like, because Jim said, I mean, people mowing their lawn, it gets knocked off.
So Kate, I have, can you explain again that part where you said that the customer is in charge of paying for that line?
Well, for the, for this project, we will be paying to make those improvements to that, or, not improvements, the fixes, the repairs to the private lateral. But the picture, where the private lateral services goes from our sewer main, that's, you know, on the right of way or in the street, that connects all the way to where the house is, where, where your sewer tap is. So that entire lateral line, there are different portions of it. There's the upper lateral, which I believe is from the house to the property line, and then from the property line to the, is the lower lateral to the gravity main. But in our ordinances and very typical, all of that pipe is the homeowner's responsibility.
And typically, when you would have a leak of some kind, and it happens, in fact, Councilman Winn was bringing one to our attention the other day, that is the responsibility of the private property owner. Because of the consent decree, though, in relationship to just kind of the INI issue that the EPA, the EPA doesn't care that the homeowner has the issue. They'd see you as having the issue right now for this issue specifically. So that's the reason you have this program that is designed to be able to kind of work on this. Typically, this would be the responsibility of the private property owner, but because of the EPA consent decree, that falls on our back now.
And cost-wise, it's, it's so much more cost-efficient to be repairing these lateral lines than, I mean, we are repairing the gravity lines as well, but the bang for our buck, I guess you could say, we get for doing this is pretty significant.
Kate, have you had any instances of any of the private property owners being resistant or not assisting with any of the repair work?
I, I, yeah, I would say so, but typically, it really comes down to communication, as long as you're able to communicate with the homeowner and let them know that we're doing this for their, this is for our good, for their good. It's typically not an issue regarding this project.
All right, we got a motion by Westbrook. Need a second.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to come back and talk and discuss M4 after our executive session, so we're going to go ahead and move on to M5.
Good morning, council members.
Good morning, Darren.
I am here to request that the council consider authorizing funds for and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for construction of the Stagecoach Drainage Improvements Project in the amount of $1,882,990.50 with Fritcher Construction Company. I have my glasses on to see close like that. That's it. Thank you. What I want to do is basically give you a background first, I mean, just kind of remind you of what this project really is. We, back in 2018, there were, there was a drainage study that the, that the City Council authorized to look at this area of town and notice that in reference to these two issues that were brought up, flooding, one got into the house in this area and another one came up to the house, but not actually into the house. So in response to that, and I'm assuming other concerns, a study was done and they had three options to do it, to look at. Now, what, what you're seeing here, though, is all the water runs, stormwater runs through existing side yards. Let me show you right here. You can see on the right, excuse me, on the left where the actual creek is that runs between houses, and it's comprised of pipes.
Wow, that's quick.
Wasn't it? Pipes and open channels, so what, they are completely undersized and reduced insufficient capacity. So what was done back in March of 2021, you, council approved Langin to do a prepared plan, specifications, perform one of the three options that was comprised and recommended in this drainage study. And what was done is using a combination of RCP pipe and box covers, what we're going to do is to take divert about 57% of the flow from that creek going between the houses and into RCP pipe, and it's going to go down Kings Park from east to west, going west, and then it's going to go down Stagecoach where a lot of the flow goes. It's inverting most of the flow, or a lot of the flow from the north that would flow through there and just keeping a lot of the fluid flow in Kings Park and all that, and keeping that in the system, but diverting most of the flow, or more than the majority of the flow away from that down Stagecoach. So the new, the new project would include RCP and everything, but it would also, we would also leave the existing pipes and drain structures that go between the houses, leave that in place, and really just not even disturb that, so there would be the least amount of disruption to those homes. That's, that is the intention of that, what we're doing here. Now, we did take bids on this, and we had three bidders, which was great to have three bidders on projects nowadays. So we did have, they were very close bids. I mean, $38,000 roughly between the two low bids on a $1.9 million project was impressive. I know Fritcher and Reynolds and Kay both wanted this project very much. Fritcher won it, and we checked out, we, we know Fritcher, they are all approved contractors on our approved contractor list. So we are recommending the City Council approve funds for and enter into a contract with Fritcher Construction Services for the construction of the Stagecoach Drive Improvements in the amount of $1,882,990.50.
Any questions for Darren?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, go ahead, James.
Darren, on the open culverts, does the city come through periodically, inspect or clean those, or if a homeowner calls and says, hey, I've got debris, will the city come out and clean those?
That's where we have that drainage easement issue versus not. If we have a drainage easement, we would go out and try to clean that, but just due to the workload, we don't always have, we got manpower to be able to go out and inspect them regularly. So we do rely on a lot of the times.
So I think that kind of gets at my question. What would, what would you say that we are doing today with new developments to avoid that kind of problem 40 years from now? So that we don't, we don't constantly run into this problem, you know, you know, this was put in a long time ago. Nobody in this room was here when this development has been properly. But, you know, we don't want to come back and spend a couple billion dollars to fix.
A new development now, 30 years from now, do the same thing on that one.
Correct.
We are reviewing the plans better. We did a much more thorough review of the plans. We have much, thank you for the staffing to allow us to do that, and it's been very helpful. So we are a much more thorough review, and we are just initiating a revision to the UDC drainage. We're going to do the awkward roundtable here starting this month, initiating that.
Because that is a lot of what we see is developments that have been there for a while, and we're spending considerable money, it seems to fix possibly things that were not correctly sized.
There are a lot of things allowed upstream without any stormwater on-site detention or anything like that, which just allowed all the extra runoff just to flow, and all that above Kings Park does flow right through there.
Through there.
True. So that's what we are converting down to this.
The city has easements on all this.
On the drain, on the, the streets, yes.
On the streets, yes.
Remember, take it back to the drawing.
Not that open cut, I bet.
You're taking it down to Stagecoach Drive, which you have right of way all through that area, so that's not...
Probably not, not the yellow, though.
The yellow, it'll probably be piecemeal, depending on what was kind of provided to the city at the time of that development. I'm not sure what you staged it.
I expect it's peaceful. I can't tell you specifically, but I don't think we have the vast majority of it, but we do have it where it crosses.
Which, that in itself is a, yeah, exactly.
So one good thing about this project is we worked with a stepping stone school that has that driveway, the old athletic club, Dick Brown over there, and he, we got the easement for free from him. They wanted us to purchase the property altogether. He actually purchased it and gave us the easement. So we were able to save some money there as a, as a good thing.
All right, any other questions for Darren?
Move to approve M4.
Second.
M5, oh, I'm sorry, M5. M5.
M5.
Yep.
Who, who made the motion?
Shirley. I did, Shirley, second.
Okay, got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. All right, we're down to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda this week.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Sorry about that, sir. A few items of note. We just completed our year two of our traffic signal timing study, and as part of this ITS master plan, we're re-timing traffic signals every year in order to make sure our signal timings are up to date and adequately address current traffic patterns. The year-two traffic signal re-timing project included 18 signalized intersections along Front Street, Broadway, Fourth Street, and Fifth Street. The new signal timings were implemented in late August, and we now have our final report, which shows before and after results. Overall, we've seen reductions in delay of 32% on Broadway Avenue, 6% on Front Street, 25% on Fourth Street, and 28% on Fifth Street. These delays result in an estimated reduction of 86,000 vehicle hours of delay over 10 years in savings of $2.8 million peak period delay annually. Few other items of note, Tyler Municipal Court is preparing a warrant amnesty program in advance of the annual statewide warrant sweep in March. During the month of February, the court will encourage those with outstanding warrants to clear their warrants ahead of the sweep in order to avoid the risk of arrest. And so the special will be in effect from February 1st to February 28th, and this allows defendants an opportunity to clear their warrants ahead of the March statewide annual warrant sweep, obtain their valid driver's license, and also obtain or maintain their employment, depending upon the necessity of a clear, as far as clear driver's license. One of the things of news today, you probably saw this morning about the FAA software issue, and so we did check with Tyler Pounds Field. There was a delay this morning from our six o'clock flights, about two hours, that they are taking off and all the, everything has been back to normal over there at Tyler Pounds Field, and so we're glad to have that going on, but we kind of, or sorry about the hiccup that we experienced along with the rest of the nation this morning. And also, just as we've kind of entered the new year, there are some thank yous I want to kind of extend out for what we saw towards the end of the year, for 2022. Kind of ending up the year, we saw some major weather events with a, with a winter weather prep and response that was needed for the week leading into Christmas, and then also tornado storm prep for New Year's. And so city staff did an incredible job of stepping up and making sure we were ready and being prepared and getting out there to take care of those situations. And then finally, I want to say a big thank you for the Blue Santa program, which I know a number of y'all also took part in, that Sergeant Chuck Voice leads with the Tyler Police Department and other departments, and they did an incredible job. Over 350 children were served to make sure that they were able to have a wonderful Christmas and just, it's the amount of just smiles and just happiness that the Tyler Police Department and Chuck were able to lead was incredible. And so we're very grateful for that program, for the work they did.
Any comments or, for Mr. City Manager?
Well said.
Good job. Okay, we're about to go into executive session. Under Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding the following. Possible offer of financial or other incentive to a prospect and to consider financial and other information about the prospect project with which the city is conducting, conducting economic development negotiations that could lead to a partnership in Tyler. So I don't know if we'll have action on this item or not?
We intend to. The expectation is we'll meet with council and then come back, go within, as far as, you know, you're about to recess to executive session, we'll call, meet back to order, and then have M4. We'll come back to that. Any presentations needed on that, and then council can may consider action at that point on M4 if so desired.
Okay. We'll be back shortly. Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to talk to... I think that's pretty nice. He likes less beer. 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 I think that's pretty nice.
We are back from executive session. And at this time, we're going to go back to agenda item M4. But before we can discuss it, it was previously tabled, so we need to get it back on the table.
Mr. Mayor, I move to remove item M4 from the table.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis Second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Stephanie, is anybody doing a presentation on this?
We don't need to.
Yeah, why don't you just kind of come up and just discuss this a little bit for the basis of the agreement?
30 minutes tops.
Yeah, just wing it.
We got twist matches back there grading your ums and ahs.
You could get Benny to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're being filmed.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning. Morning.
So, we've talked extensively at our last meeting and now today in executive session, but we're excited today to have North Development here to talk about the Carlton Building. And really, the summary or highlights of what we are asking Council to do today is to authorize the city manager to approve an economic incentive grant for North Development. And the highlights of that are the city would reimburse North a million, 1.5 million upon completion of the building, and substantial completion means either issuing a certificate of occupancy or a temporary certificate of occupancy. The other incentive piece would be that the city would reimburse North Development over $200,000 in building permit fees for anything that they've submitted to the city. And then some of the other details, North is looking to invest somewhat about over 30 million is what we're looking at for the property. And this will be an historic tax credit property as well, so they're looking at federal historic funds. It's also an opportunity zone. So they're looking at stacking some of these incentives to make the project work because it is a very large investment, just condition of the building. And this building has been, you know, really a piece of urban life in downtown, and it's probably the largest property that we have in downtown in terms of a public health and safety risk. So moving this project forward and assisting with North, we feel like will be the catalyst for the additional development downtown. It's over, I think, 100 units residential multifamily. The requirement in the agreement is that it would be offered at market rate or above to make sure that that property and the investment is protected for the city. And I think that's really the highlight section of the agreement. And, you know, Colin is here. If you would like him to make some comments on behalf of North.
Anyone have any questions for Stephanie or Colin with North or?
I'll point out, since I've raised the questions at the December meeting regarding the contract, that I've looked at the revised contract and all the questions that I had at that time have been addressed and the agreement has been revised to reflect those changes. And so I'm satisfied with the changes that were made.
I'm excited about the project because I was reading about it. And I think the hotel shut down in '71, which was two years after I was born. So I've never seen this hotel, you know, as far as functioning. So I'm excited to see exactly, you know, how it's going to turn out. It'll be a great project. So I move to approve M4.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion by McGee. Do we have a second?
Shirley, second.
Oh, Shirley. Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And good luck with your project and thank you for coming to the dialer. All right, we are down to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.